Hello, good evening. Welcome to this May 4 regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calavano.
Well, we're at a point in the meeting where we opened up the meeting. We were in executive session. We're out of executive session. So we're at a point where if everybody can please stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed in public meeting minutes of April 16th, 20th, and 27th?
Motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Up next, welcome back and congratulations to Darlene Folas, our student liaison. We want to congratulate Darlene. If you didn't see on social media, she's the proud winner of a Princeton Prize in Race Relations Award. And it's great to have you back. Look forward to hearing from you. You're on.
Thank you so much. I first want to begin by hoping that we are finding you all in good health and amazing spirits. I will be giving my report today, and I want to highlight some of the efforts from our specific students and then collective efforts that groups in our community have done to support others in need. So first, Natalie Lin Evans and Brett Zeligzins were recently recognized as the school's top scholar athletes for 2020 by the Essex County Athletic Directors Association. So I think we should recognize their good efforts in being amazing students and amazing athletes. Next, we have Cadet Captain Nate Benoye and Cadet Technical Sergeant Austin Cowley, who were selected for the Air Force Chief of Staff Private Pilot Scholarship for 2020. This is a scholarship that's valued at $22,000, in which 200 cadets worldwide are selected to attend. They were not only nominated from our squadron, but they were supposed to get their private pilot's license. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, it's been postponed to next year. But we still want to celebrate their efforts, and you can find more about them at the Mountaineers Aviator Instagram. Lastly, last Friday was National Decision Day, and we want to shout out some of our seniors. Our co-president Kaia Baker is going to NYU, and the other co-president Brett Zeligzins is going to Princeton University. We also have over 100 students who posted where they will be going. So for more information on that, you can visit Wolf Seniors 2020, Wolf Seniors 2020 for more information. And I'd like to just shout out a couple of our Ivy League's committed students. So we have Gustav Hall, who's going to Brown University, Trey Sangvi and Imani Miller going to UPenn, and Yassin Ali, who committed to Yale to play soccer for the class 2025. And then those were our individuals. So for the more collective efforts, we have the Mountaineer mentors, who have been partnering with some of our past Mountaineers to provide touring programs for students within our district. And we also have our Mountaineer Squadron, who have been working together to donate food to families within our community. Within their first week last week, they raised over 900 meals and are going to continue their efforts for the rest of the month. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. Some really good stuff going on. Congratulations to all of these seniors who are going to such great places. We're really proud of you guys. All right. Dr. Cascone?
Just need to make sure that you're unmuted, Dr. Cascone.
Thank you, Mr. Alper, and good evening to the board and members of the community. Ms. Folas, congratulations to you. I was just blown away by the achievement. You know, when I saw that on social media, I was just tremendously proud of you and tremendously proud of our community. Just to echo, in terms of, you know, obviously, I'm on social media on Instagram, and every time I open up the account, I see another senior's college admissions posted. And, you know, I just, I can't be prouder of those students. I can't be prouder of our school district because the quality of the academic, the post-secondary, you know, academic institutions of higher learning that our students are being accepted to is just outstanding. I mean, obviously Ivy League schools, but just every institution that I've seen has been a high-quality institution of higher learning. A lot of students going to Rutgers, New Brunswick, which is an outstanding, you know, state college. And I think it just speaks volumes about the quality of what's going on in our high school, the leadership, the instruction, the curriculum, the resources. And I think it is a direct result and testament to the commitment that the board and the commitment that this community has consistently and perennially put into its educational system. And just I'm blown away and just super proud. Continuing along, just in gratitude and pride, I'd like to also thank the Junior Air Force ROTC Mountaineer Squadron. You know, Major Marchessini reached out to me last week and indicated that his cadets were looking to get off the sidelines and get involved and help out. You know, and so I said, well, you know, we could use some assistance with our food pantry. And so Major Marchessini and Chief Thurston came yesterday and brought some much-needed reinforcements, you know, for our pantry, and we're going to be doing a number of deliveries on Wednesday. So I can't thank the cadets enough, not that I'm surprised by their efforts. It's an outstanding group of young men and women, as well as the leaders who work over that program, and Major Marchessini and Chief Thurston. So thank you so much to those folks. And I know our families greatly appreciate it as well. Certainly, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Teacher Appreciation Week. Of course, tomorrow is National Teacher Appreciation Day. We've gotten some wonderful messages out there from students, from parents, from colleagues to colleagues. And certainly, you couldn't think of a more appropriate time to acknowledge and recognize the efforts of our professional educators. They never, it never surprises me, because having worked in this profession for 25 years, I've always known the metal and the stuff that our teachers are made of. And so it's just another example how when a time of need arises, they rise to the occasion. And so I'm tremendously proud and honored to serve them as their superintendent of schools, and their efforts are greatly appreciated. The obviously, big news today came from the Governor's Office and the New Jersey Department of Education. They did make the call following on the heels of the call that was made in Pennsylvania and New York to close our schools for the remainder of the year. As I, you know, kind of wrote and said in a communication that went home to our community tonight, I think it's a decision that we all knew was coming. I think we, there's a wisdom and certainly kind of a necessity in that decision. But that doesn't necessarily make the implications of that decision any easier for, in particular, for our students. And in particular, our students who are graduating or moving up. You know, and some things, you know, I hadn't even considered it until I was looking on social media, and I saw a post from her mom, and she was saying, you know, for a student for whom this was their last year in recreational soccer or travel baseball, you know, obviously, our interscholastic athletes as well. But, you know, just missing an opportunity, you know, the last year, the end of an era for them. And so I think, you know, just remaining kind of sensitive and understanding to that and let all these young ladies and gentlemen out there know that I'm thinking of them, and I understand that it's a tough, it's a tough one for you. But also that, you know, your lives are long, and you have many, many adventures and wonderful things to experience moving forward. And of course, you know, the love and the health of the folks that you have around you and your families and your friends. So we are, we are closed for the remainder of the year. On a level, this really simplifies our thought process right now. We had been kind of fighting a war on two fronts, if you will, which was continuing to maintain our operations in a virtual environment, and then also kind of putting an eye on what it would look like if we were to return. So I am thankful for that, because it's going to give us additional time to think through how we could open schools in September. And it's also going to give time for medicine and science to catch up. And hopefully, we will have some clear guidelines sooner rather than later as to what we would need to do in order to open our schools safely in September. So that's actually been, from a planning standpoint, has been a real blessing. And now we can really focus exclusively on making sure that the rest of this year unfolds in the highest quality manner possible for our students and our families. And just to conclude, obviously, the, you know, the main agenda item on tonight's, for tonight's meeting is the final budget being moved forward for adoption. And I just, you know, I know Mr. Alper and board members have some thoughts on this, but I just want to kind of provide a couple of pieces of context here. So as you may or may not know, the state has extended their fiscal year to September 30. Our fiscal year in public schools begins on July 1. Now, the state has previously provided us with an allocation for our state aid, and the West Orange schools get about $16 million in state aid. And in essence, what we've heard is that because of the lost revenues in the state from sales tax tolls and also the increased amount of funds which have been outgoing to assist with the ongoing crisis on a number of different levels, that the coffers of the state are not going to be what they would have expected. And this could potentially impact our state aid. Now, there's a counter narrative to that, which was also referenced today in the Governor's address to the state, that there are federal aid monies coming and there are state aid monies, state aid coming. But it's difficult to predict exactly what that'll be and how that will offset any kind of losses that the state governments incurred in terms of their own revenues and therefore their budget for next year. And what that means is, is that in an unprecedented fashion, we will hopefully approve a budget tonight. And then based upon the numbers that we get from the state, which we could get as late as August, but we're hoping to get them sooner, we could in fact lose millions of dollars in what was previously counted on revenue and find ourselves in a position where we now need to make that up. And I mention that only because I know that, you know, if we talk about cutting this budget any further, making this budget any more lean, although there's certainly arguments for or against that, what that means is if we lose state aid, we actually have less local money with which to offset that loss in state aid, which means more draconian and drastic cuts that would need to be made between today and the actual beginning of the 2021 school year. So I just want to insert that for context, as it may not have been something that members of the public would have been aware of. And with that, I conclude my report, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Alper.
All right, we're ready for the budget presentation.
Lauren, if you could start with slide number three, please. Okay. Good evening, everyone. These are our board budget goals that the board actually approved on a November, at the November 18 board meeting. Here's a glossary of budget terms. If you think about our entire budget, it's really made up of three parts. One being a general fund, which is the operating budget. Two, being special revenue fund. This is a fund reserved for state and federal grants. And three, debt service. This is the repayment of building construction bonds and lease purchase agreements that were previously approved in years past. You can think of this as your mortgage payment, your principal and interest that you pay. Capital reserve. It's a reserve fund set aside for facility maintenance projects. There are various reserves. You can have a capital reserve fund. You can have a maintenance reserve fund. You can have a tuition reserve fund. You could have an emergency reserve fund. At this point, we only have a capital reserve, and we have approximately a little bit over $500 in this capital reserve account. So we're really lacking in the reserves for the school district. Bank cap. It's unused tax levy for use in any of the next three budget years. I'll explain a little bit more about this in the upcoming slide. Fund balance is like a savings fund. It's reserved for emergencies, restricted 2% of the budget. Unfortunately, we do not get to the 2% of the budget. We're usually 1 and 1/2 or between 1 and 1 and 1/2% of the budget. So that's another area that we're trying to focus on. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. School tax levy. It's textbook collected by the township for school use, and the tax rates, the amount of dollars per 100 assessed home value. Here's our budget approval timeline. We had our preliminary budget presentation. That went to the county. The county reviewed and approved on April 2. Then we had another budget workshop on the 16th, and here we are this evening on May 4. Okay, so now here's the revenues of the budget. Again, three budgets, operating, special revenue, and debt service. So let's look at the operating, local tax levy. Then we have state aid. Earlier, Dr. Cascone mentioned that the district received about $16 million in state aid. In addition to that $16 million, we also have to apply, we actually apply for two other aids, one being reimbursement of non-public school transportation costs. So this is the, our main obligation for non-public students is we must provide transportation first. If we can provide transportation within $1,000 per student. If we cannot provide transportation within $1,000, then we actually cut a check to the parents for $1,000. So years ago, it was set at $710. And then the 2% cap came into play, and then the state decided to increase it, and they've been, you know, they increased it up to $1,000. By us applying to the state, they will give us the difference between $710 and $1,000. So that's included in this number. In addition, extraordinary aid. This provides additional aid to districts with classified students who have certain expenses over a set threshold. So here again, we have to apply for it. We're actually in a process right now, applying for the current year that we're in. And then that's added to that $16 million number. So our projection for next year is somewhere a little bit about, a little over $17.8 million. We have budgeted fund balance to $1 million. That's the, you know, you can keep up to 2% of your budget. Each year, we budget money from this fund balance that we have. So we started years ago at $2.5 million. Last year, we came down to 2.250. This year, we're at $2 million. We're trying to wean off of this fund balance commitment each year. So hopefully, in the upcoming years, we'll get to a point where we'll be able to have a 2% fund balance. Tuitions and miscellaneous. These include tuition from other school districts, rentals, and interest income. So then we look at Fund 20, special revenue. Again, these are reserved for federal and state aid. Some examples. We received Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV IDEA, which is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act funding. We have, we also received non-public funding that goes through our books. So we received non-public funding for textbooks, nursing, security, and technology. So we have to record it in our books as a receipt and also as expenditure. And any of these funds that are not spent have to be returned to the Department of Education. Oh, one other thing I forgot to mention. Back into that miscellaneous number in the operating budget, we have SEMI, which is Special Education Medicaid Initiative. We actually able to recover a portion of costs for certain Medicaid-covered services provided to eligible students. So we're looking over $200,000 of that money coming to the district. Fund 40, debt service. We have our local tax levy. We have state aid. And then we have budgeted fund balance. And that budgeted fund balance, each year, we round. We don't deal in pennies when we put the budget together, so we round up. And that's the $2 that was actually left over. And we then have to, you know, put it back into the budget for the upcoming school year. So our grand total for three budgets, which is within the, you know, the grand total is $171,399,914. Here's the expenditure side. Again, if you look at the number, it does match the revenue number that we just spoke about. So here's some categories that we put together. Salaries. This includes all salaries for all departments. So when you look down on the chart, and you'll see transportation, the salaries have been taken away from that number, and it's listed in the salary number. So it's $99 million, 99.9. And this is not unique to West Orange. This is probably the percentage that you'll see statewide. These salaries include projected increases, guide movements. We have guide movements, and most districts have guide movements where, depending on your level of education, if you're, if you have a BA degree, you're at this level. If you have BA plus 15 credits, you get moved to the next level, actually across the guide. You can go to BA 30, MA, et cetera. So we have eight levels of guide. So when a staff member obtains additional credit, they submit for adjustment in their salary. So that's also budgeted in this number and longevity. So depending on the number of years you're with us, longevity will kick in, and we have budgeted for that. Under the benefits, we have, obviously, the medical benefits, the prescription, and the dental, but also includes workers' compensation, includes social security, includes pension payments that we have to make for the non-certificated members, so forth. Special services, again, no salaries included in this line, but also including transportation that's for special service students. We have instructional support. Majority of this money is basically supplies. Operation Maintenance Security, Transportation, and General Ed. Here, we actually budget for, we talked about earlier about non-public students. We have about $343,000 that we budget for actual transportation. And then we budget about $575,000 for aid in lieu of, this is where a parent will receive a check for $1,000, 500 in January and 500 in June. Charter schools. We have seven students attending six charter schools. So we pay, you can call it a tuition to each of the charter schools. Capital outlay. This is where we have our major construction projects, any equipment that's valued over $2,000. And also, we have a SDA assessment, which is School Development Authority Assessment for previous funding that we receive from the state. On construction projects, we now have to pay an assessment because we receive those funds. We have special revenue and then debt service. So again, the total is 171, almost $171.4 million. So here's a slide regarding tax levy from the preliminary budget to proposed budget or this evening's budget. So from the preliminary budget, the proposed general tax levy increased to $400,000. Debt service fund remains zero, at zero. So we're looking at a total tax levy increase of $400,000, which equates to $10.15 on the average assessed home. If we just look at the operating budget, the change here is the additional $400,000 of additional bank cap that we're using. So we're looking at our original operating, the preliminary budget was approved at 2 and 1/2% increase. We are now at 2.79% increase. This bank cap. So bank cap, yeah, looking at the last two school years. 1819, we generated a bank cap of $4.5 million. And I'm just, you know, rounding this off, $4.5 million. Last school year, 1920, we had a bank cap of $1.2 million. So before we even started this process this year, we had $5.7 million in bank cap. So what this means is, this is not additional funding that we receive from the state. It actually allows us to go up to, up over the 2%. So each school district's capped under local tax levy, the operating budget tax levy, 2%. So you can go up 2%. But if you have increases in health costs or enrollment increases, there's adjustments that you can apply for, and you can go above the 2%. So at times where you don't go to the 2%, that money or that amount is banked, and you get to use it within the next three school years. And all that does is it allows you to increase that 2% cap, meaning that you're increasing taxes by whatever that amount is. You're not receiving any funding from the state. It's just increasing your local tax levy above the 2%.
Mr. Calavano?
Yes.
So the proposed bank cap in this budget is about 1.2?
It's $1,092,440.
Okay. And how much, how much bank cap would we be authorized to use?
5.7 million of bank cap.
So we're using $4 million less than we could?
Right. And this slide will show you $4.6 million unused.
Right. So I just, I want to just, if I may, Mr. Calavano, interrupt for just a moment and just call attention to this slide, because I think, I think there's, this slide says a lot about the efforts here. So, you know, we're embarking on the next, the next year or two of uncharted financial waters, where we could potentially see massive losses in state aid. And whereby, if we were to the board, I should say, and administration were to have recommended, and the board would have approved the use of this additional $4.07 million in bank cap, which we could do. You know, it would, it would, it would go into our base, and it would unquestionably poise and set ourselves up to be able to withstand, you know, the, some of the significant cuts which may be coming down the pike. I think the fact that neither the administration recommended it, and I think right off the bat, the board was very clear from the get-go that that was not something they even remotely would consider doing, in absolute deference to the municipal taxpayer, in absolute deference and in alignment with fiscal responsibility. So, and that is a quantity of money which absolutely would ensure that we had adequate funding to be able to perhaps manage unexpected costs which might come down the pike. But I put that out there because I think it speaks to the willingness of this administration and this board, although we would be authorized to do that, that we were not even going to go anywhere near close that $5 million. Thanks, Mr. Calavano.
Thank you. Here we have the tax levy comparison, comparing the 1920 school year to the 2021 school year in each of the two funds, general fund, which is the operating budget, and also the debt service. So you'll see an increase in the general fund of 2.79, a decrease in debt service. So when you look at the total tax levy, it's increasing 2.39%. So when you look at how the taxes are struck, the taxes are based on a calendar year. But our, so within that calendar year, you have two school years. You have half of the old, and you have half of the new. So from January to June of the current year is put into the calculation. And then from the new, July to December is put into the calculation. So when you look at our calendar year tax levy, you'll see $145,129,113.
Mr. Calavano, you want me to take over here?
Yes, please.
Okay. You know, so obviously, you know, within the budget, it's important to speak to how this budget is supporting our both ongoing priorities as well as new ones as well. And so, you know, some of the aspects, priorities that this budget will fund and will support span instructional program, overall support to staff, alternate revenue streams, as well as the safety and security and upgrade of our facilities. In terms of instructional program, our budget will continue to support the positive momentum that we've seen this year insofar as our readers, writers, workshop approaching the elementary level. And this is, this is an initiative that has been ongoing for a number of years. I think that we are finally starting to see some positive traction on this and are looking forward to continuing that next year and supporting that so that we can offer a high-quality, multi-century and robust, you know, reading program, reading approach, I should say, at the elementary level. Our ongoing implementation of a new mathematics program in grades 6 through 8. We are, I'm very pleased that we've been able to add intervention capacity at the middle schools. While we've had a very robust program on the elementary level, you know, up until this year, up of the year upcoming, we have no remedial support at the, at the middle schools. And this budget will support the addition of a remedial specialist at each of the middle schools. And this will obviously go hand in hand with in moving over from a basic skills program into a true RTI or Response to Intervention Program in grades initially. into a true RTI or response to intervention program, um, on, in grades initially, uh, K five and then ultimately into the middle school as well. Um, we'll continue to focus on social emotional learning, mindfulness, um, and, um, and, and also just the annual curriculum development and revision that happens, uh, irregularly, uh, each year. Um, our budget, um, though this is a relatively small percentage of our budget, I think it was three point three percent, is the instructional resources and materials to support teaching and learning. I can tell you that, um, this budget, the, the preliminary budget, there were about three million dollars of, uh, requested, uh, proposals or requested increases. And I can tell you that we were extremely discretionary, um, and made quite a few, um, uh, strategic cuts to what was proposed uh, in those lines and Mr. Calavano will speak a little bit more about that later. And we'll continue to offer professional development. We're not able to fund nearly as much professional development as we have in past years. This was one of the lines that saw a significant cut. Um, but what we will start to do is to shift over to more of a locally based, uh, professional development model, which leverages the expertise of our staff here in district as opposed to, uh, sending staff members out. It's not to say we won't send staff members out. We're going to be far more selective and strategic in how and when we send them out and really leverage the fantastic expertise that we have here in district. Um, we will once again fund a partnership with a grant writing firm, um, that can, uh, that, but, but one that can offer much more, uh, capacity for prospecting, actually going out and searching for grants for us, writing grants for us and researching those. And, uh, and with the, the intention that, uh, a new partner will be able to, um, bring us in significantly more revenue and grants. And then finally, you know, uh, it, it supports the, the upgrade in the facilities of our buildings. Uh, we have security work, much of which is being largely funded out of our, our federal cops grant, but some of which we've had to match locally, uh, which is going to enable us to really, um, complete and modernize all of our visitor, um, uh, management systems. It's a system that will enable us to be in alignment with Alyssa's law, um, and it's work, um, that is, is, uh, necessary for us to get done to ensure that our facilities are, are, are upgraded and updated insofar as, uh, security goes. And I, I, you know, I have to just say this because I know that there's a, um, a concerned constituency within the community about this. Is even as we upgrade our facilities from a safety and security standpoint, is, is maintaining a critical eye, ensuring that our schools remain welcoming and as open possible as places to our parents and our, um, and our valued community members. So I feel that that was worth mentioning as I know it's important to people in our community. Um, the next slide really just kind of, um, provides a little bit more information regarding, uh, curriculum instructional materials. Uh, in addition to academic support, um, is the addition of differentiation strategies to newly revised curriculum as well as instructional program to, to support or self-contained autism programs. It's really important that we continue to invest in our local special education programs uh, to ensure that they are meeting the needs as much as possible and that we can continue to educate as many of our special needs students here in their home community with their peers and in their neighborhoods. Our professional, a number of the professional learning opportunities which we're going to continue to focus on are noted here. Um, we are going to continue our work in the area of, uh, diversity, equity and access. And just, just to kind of put some context behind that, because I know, you know, sometimes in our profession, we bandy about these words and, and we lose sight of what they really mean. So, you know, what this essentially means is, is that when we look at our performance data, when we look at our enrollment data, when we look at our suspension data, we look at our attendance data, are we seeing disproportionality along demographic lines? Whether it be male, female, whether it be race, whether it be socioeconomics, whether it be special needs students. And, um, if that is so, understanding why those disproportionality exist and seeing what more we can do in our role as the educational system to help close those gaps. Because in themselves, those demographic differences should not contribute to disproportionality. So what else can we do to help bridge those? And so that's going to continue to be, uh, a focus for us. And obviously you can see, um, you know, quite a number of other areas, uh, which are going to be supported in professional learning, which is obviously crucial, uh, to maintain, um, our, our, our status as a high performing school district. Uh, moving to the next slide, um, you can see that, um, we, we will, uh, we will fund, um, some, some staff lines. The special education teacher and paraprofessional lines are, uh, staff additions that are driven by, uh, by enrollment largely. Um, and I think that, um, you know, this is, this is a, a positive reflection, I would argue on, um, you know, A, um, you know, people recognize that West Orange, um, school district has, uh, outstanding special education offerings. And so people may even come to West Orange specifically, um, so their children can benefit from the programming here. But it's also that, uh, we are becoming more adept at servicing a broader spectrum of students here in the district and therefore, and happy to do that, but that, uh, and with there being, um, code-based restrictions on the number of students that could be in certain types of self-contained classes, it, it requires us to have additional staff. Um, and that's, uh, what you see here. Now, I know people talk about, you know, well, paraprofessionals, we have so, you know, we have many paraprofessionals and, you know, a- and, and look, I mean, I think that, um, uh, you know, th- these, these staff members are, um, you know, I've seen firsthand the work that they do in the classrooms uh, with our special needs students. I, I've seen in many communities where they've attempted to privatize paraprofessionals. You, you see a, uh, a, a, a really, um, uh, strong advocacy that comes largely from special education parents who come. And I've seen it, I've seen meetings where parents come and they speak to the relationship that these paraprofessionals have with special needs students, um, who sometimes are with students for multiple years. I've heard people talk about paraprofessionals that work with special needs students like family. So these, these professionals are, are really a crucial part to ensuring that we can have special needs students in the least restrictive environment as possible, um, and, and are crucial to those operations. Obviously through our annual evaluation process, we're always looking to see, um, you know, can the student transition off of this support? Because it's ultimately our goal to have students be independent. Um, but these staff members make no mistake about it, are a crucial, crucial part of what we do here and the outstanding special education programs we offer. We will, um, uh, include a, a nurse, uh, in, in the budget this year. And, and I know there's been some question marks as to the need for this. And so I'd like to speak a little bit about this. Um, we have, uh, uh, you know, two thousand students approximately in our high school. We have two nurses, that, that's a ratio of one nurse to a thousand students. Um, I think it's important to realize that, um, you know, outside of simply the, the students who may come down on a, on a, you know, a rotating basis over the course of the school day, and those are significant. You know, you also have all the other responsibilities that school nurses, um, you know, serve. Many people don't realize that school nurses serve on five oh four committees. School nurses serve on, uh, as a member of the child study team for IEPs. Um, s- uh, school nurses are, um, you know, are involved in, um, you know, in substance abuse pieces. And certainly in the day and age in which we're living now, um, and with a- additional protocol that might need to be in place for the upcoming school year, I think it is very, uh, reasonable to, um, to, to make a, to develop a strong rationale for an additional nurse. You know, when you consider the ratio that exists for nurses at our other schools. And of course, one of the benefits of this is that this nurse would be able to be utilized, though I would, I would say not, you know, at, you know, not, uh, excessively. If i- in, in emergent situations, if we need a nurse, um, to plug in someplace else or on a trip. And this would be a cost-saving measures, we would not have to contract out, um, to, uh, you know, independent nurse services like Biata that we do from time to time. Um, again, we have our two academic support teachers at grade seven, eight. Anyone that's been paying attention to our district assessment report will note that our student achievement tends to dip in middle school. Um, and there are a variety of different reasons for this. Um, but I think a big part of it is that we, at a critical transition time academically, we removed basically all of the, the remedial assistance for kids. That's a, that's a one pretty strong argument why we see it happen, in addition to the work obviously becoming more complex. So this is an extremely important part to supporting our middle school students at a key, uh, academic transition. And, and we will be able to, um, save, um, actually save some money with the addition of this French teacher as we've been able to eliminate some of the, the six period assignments, or what are called additional assignments, as they're reflected on the board agenda to staff, um, that program. Okay. Um, when you look at, at technology, uh, obviously we're seeing, um, we're seeing the, the merits and, and the value uh, of, of having, um, you know, adequate, uh, substantial technology resources. Um, if it weren't for the fact that this school district has had the foresight to, um, invest consistently in technology, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing right now. And you're seeing many school districts, um, who, who were not as far ahead of the curve that are really, really struggling in, um, in, in, in being able to, uh, service their students during these closures. And while we've had some challenges that we've had to work through, namely, um, assisting parents in working with their students on technology at home. One of the, the challenges we don't have now is the fact that our homes don't have technology or don't have internet access. And so obviously in a twenty-first century school district, twenty-first century learning environment, um, this is critical. And I, I would just note that, you know, th- this is really just the, the updating and refreshing, um, of obsolete equipment. Um, you know, this isn't necessarily above and beyond. It's, it's the natural, a cycle of replacement that happens, you know, to, uh, to, to, to swap out, uh, the hardware. Uh, that's, um, that, that's on site and that's, that's, this budget will, uh, will go a long way to ensure that our, our, our kids have updated technology, um, to be offered state-of-the-art instruction and, and learning activities. Um, in addition to, and the next slide, in addition to hardware, um, you know, s- some of the things that, you know, aren't necessarily, you know, tweet-worthy, um, but are things that are going on behind the scenes and that are being funded by this budget or, you know, the upgrading of wireless access points. The importance of keeping, you know, you know, quick internet speed and processing speed is, is obviously, um, you know, of, of high importance. Um, you know, when, certainly when we're back in school, um, we're continuing to look at ways in which we can decrease the, the amount of paper we use. We moved to a pay, uh, what's called a paper cut system this year, which tracks our usage. And we're looking at moving next year into a system which will enable all, uh, parent-student forms to be done, uh, digitally through Power School. Uh, we are also, uh, looking, um, as early as this year, uh, to implement, um, a gag, gaggle, which is a platform, um, that i- ensures that, that in the case of, um, you know, problematic or troublesome or, um, you know, potentially, uh, risky or threatening, uh, language or content being, um, being, um, put forth on our platform, that we become aware of it and that we can intervene, uh, in a timely fashion. It's also being funded, uh, through this budget. And, um, I'm going to, uh, turn it back over to Mr. Calavano now, um, to discuss transportation.
Thank you. Uh, well, regarding transportation, we're looking at leasing, lease purchasing a, a new bus and two vans. Um, currently, um, the buses, uh, two thousand and six has over a hundred and thirty thousand miles. And the two vans are two thousand and fives, and they probably have the same amount of miles. So we're looking to, uh, uh, replace those three vehicles. We're also looking to upgrade our bus radios to digital. We have half analog and half digital, so we want to go full digital. So that's our intentions for next year. Here's a listing of some maintenance projects that are included in this budget. I'll give you some time just to go through it. Okay. Here's capital projects that are included in the budget. Uh, we have a lighting system upgrade at Liberty. Uh, we were asked at one of the, uh, I guess the previous budget meeting, you know, why Liberty, Liberty's a new school? You know, why do we have expenses already? Well, believe it or not, Liberty's fifteen years old. And, um, the existing lighting, uh, operating system has become obsolete. It needs to be upgraded with, uh, parts and software that properly operate. So that's one of the, uh, projects that we're looking to do, uh, in the summertime. And we have the, uh, other projects that are on the docket for, uh, next year. Safety and security. As Dr. Dr. Casco mentioned, uh, the cops grant, the federal grant, we have, we currently have that. Uh, we received the funding, um, for this school year. But also we're applying for securing our children's future bond act grant, uh, which is in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two ninety-five. If you recall, on November sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the voters of New Jersey, um, actually approved, uh, general obligation bond issuance of five hundred million dollars, which included funding for school security upgrades. Well, they finally made it, it's here. Um, the deadline to submit is August twelfth. Uh, we could submit for cameras, dedicated servers and emergency generators for security systems, signage, keyless lock-in mechanisms, interior doors and a whole host of other, uh, items. So we will be applying for that grant. Dr. Casco?
Yes. So we, um, we knew, if we just go to the next slide. We knew that, uh, you know, became clear, uh, early on in our process based upon, um, you know, the dialogue with the administration and the board and the number we were trying to get to, um, that it would be necessary to, 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 you know, to make staff reductions. There, there is no way when we talk about ultimately cutting over five million dollars, which is ultimately what we did between, uh, the original proposed budget and what we ended up, uh, landing on, that we, we were going to have to make some cuts. We did so in, um, in, in, trying to have as, as, as limited an impact on programs and instruction as possible. And I think we've done a, a pretty good job of that. Um, you know, in some cases, uh, you, we tried to, you, you know, minimize the number of people um, who, um, who, quite frankly, who, who were losing their jobs, um, by, you know, you know, sliding them into, you know, other positions when we had retirements, alternate position, positions and things of the like. But ultimately we were, uh, we were able to reduce, um, by twenty-five, um, you know, full-time employment, positions, um, which was down from, um, which was down from thirty-five. And, um, a good number of those positions were, we were able to preserve, um, you know, by virtue of the additional, uh, you know, four hundred thousand dollars in bank cap. Um, I, I know that, you know, from the outside looking in, um, you know, you can look from an outsider's perspective and look at certain positions and, you know, and say, well, you look at the, you know, from my perspective, that looks superfluous or it should be easy enough to cut. Um, you know, but from an insider's perspective, um, you know, being able to, there are a lot of moving parts when it comes to cutting positions and what the impact of those, those cuts of those positions are ultimately on our ability to administer and to keep the operations of the school district moving forward, um, smoothly and in alignment with, uh, the regulations, statute and code. A- as you're probably aware, we have many regulations that are placed upon us, uh, by governmental entities. Um, and I'm just going to go on a slight digression here and tell you, you know, i- in the last, uh, crash, if you will, and I guess it was two thousand and eight, when school districts were required to make major cuts. And one of the first cuts that a lot of school districts made were to their supervisors. Um, and, um, but then after the, 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 uh, financial legislation seventeen oh one was passed, then the Achieve NJ legislation was passed whereby a whole host of new observation and evaluation requirements were placed back on districts. So, so what did school districts that had previously cut supervisors have to do? Well, they, in the successive year, ended, ended putting supervisors back in the budget because they realized they didn't have the administrative staff to actually do the observations and evaluations, which are, were significantly more. And to this day, there's not a lot of flexibility in the part of local school districts, um, to, to implement their own observation and evaluation protocol. You have to basically be in alignment with our policies on evaluation and observation, are in alignment with the code and with the statute. And so that becomes a real challenge because, you know, our performance evaluation system, our observations are one of the primary vehicles by which we can help teachers grow. And if we overtax our administrators with an unwieldy and unreasonable number of observations, what can we say are ultimately going to be the quality of those observations? And so it's, it's easy to look in from the outside, but I can tell you, uh, we also recognize that when we think about gradually trimming and honing down a budget. And I've heard and, and in some ways identify with some of the sentiments being expressed by, um, you know, by some of the, uh, fiscally concerned folks in the community. But, you know, you, you, you can't go from zero to sixty in far as a budget, um, without gradually planning for a, a, a gradual downsizing and looking at other mechanisms and other structures to fill in for that lost administrative capacity or lost teaching, teaching staff capacity. I think the twenty- I think the 25 staff lines is a is is a good reasonable start to that process, but I will say quite frankly. With the way I see things going financially. We are going to continue to have to find ways year by year to become leaner. And become more efficient in the way we deliver our programs without compromising as much as possible what we offer. And that is the reality. It's a reality I accept and I agree with. Next slide, yeah. You know, we we listen, we went through many. Many rounds of going through and and when I say we, I mean, that's the board, the the board, you know, did a heck of a job. You know, you know, going literally going through the budget line by line, asking good questions and. Many of those questions led to us reconsider things, go back and have conversations, think about putting things off. In some cases, we said, now, listen, this really, we really need to get this done next year. And so it was a good give and take, but there was a lot of critical thought about our lines. And I'm going to tell you, we cut a lot of money. A lot of money out of our, out of our, you know, our individual lines. And this is just an idea of of where where we, you know, where we took them from. You can see, you know, in district, at a district PD. We were able to, we were able to cut substitute coverage due to that reduced PD. We cut our curriculum writing, our summer printing dues to organizations, co-curricular stipends, we we've asked our principals to go back to the drawing board. And conduct analysis of clubs that are not are not robustly running with high student enrollment and find some savings there. We put the demographic study on hold. We've cut, you know, we've we've gone away, you know, other than for high profile positions. Posting in the newspaper because it's it's really obscene, the amount that they they charge using online mechanisms. So we've really construction projects, the construction projects, the maintenance projects, which you saw in the budget, which is still a fair amount of projects we're getting done. Is a fraction of what we had originally budgeted for. We cut that significantly, equipment, vehicles. And and really then just looking at the way we spend on custodial overtime, chaperoning all these things, looking for efficiencies in the way we. We way those staff members are proposed and the way that we're using security staff and custodial staff. To to really limit the amount limit, but become more efficient in our usage of overtime. These are all areas in which we. Helped get to that 5 million plus number that we reduced the budget from the original number to where it is now.
So here, so here we have our shared service programs. You'll see these usually co-ops. Major co-ops like the Essex Regional Educational Services Commission. Basically has over 1300 members. So when they go out to bid, they go out to bid on behalf of the 1300 members and we get to enjoy lower prices. Give you an example for educational services. For ed ed data services. Well, let me, let me backtrack. The Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, the purchasing group, that is the group that has over 1300 members. The ed data services, we basically, they have over 450 school districts. And they are, we use them for like the startup supplies for September for all the for the teachers. So by utilizing them this past September, we were able to save $334,000 by utilizing the group purchasing rather than us going on our own. As an individual. So we try to take advantage of these groups often. And the relationship we have with the township, we have a great relationship. So you'll see the things that we share with the township. On this slide. So here's our medical premium analysis. And this is where we ended up. This is not where we started. We were we were much higher than this and. We were going back and forth with the current provider and then we, you know, we, our broker goes out each year to solicit quotes. And we had, you know, Horizon, if you could see Horizon, this is where they ended up. And Aetna is our current provider and they're at a 1% increase. So we kept on and they weren't, there were nowhere near 1%. So it was a high at one point and we said, all right, this is the last time we're going back to you. The district needs to make a decision and move forward. So Aetna came in and lowered the price at a 1% increase. The palm of the horizon is if you look at the footnote. It's contingent upon us utilizing Horizon for the prescription plan, which was at a 7%, a 7% increase. When you look at, when you combine those two and combine where we are with Aetna and our current prescription provider. We were at the same amount. So we decided that we're going to stay with our current provider, be less disruptive for staff. And we enjoy the same same savings. We also, we always look at the school health insurance fund. Everybody comes to us and says, well, why aren't you in the state health benefits program? And if you look at footnote number two, that's because they don't offer equal to or better than coverage. So in our contract, if we were to move to another provider. They actually have to offer equal or better than the coverage that we currently have. And then you'll see the footnote on the increase for the state plan number three. So we are staying with Aetna for this upcoming school year.
Mr. Calavano?
Yes.
Just before you get to the concluding slide, and I know it's, this isn't in the presentation, but you and I had had a conversation about it and I thought it might be. Might be helpful for the public. Can you talk a little bit about our reverse auction? The reverse auction process, just just basically as an additional step that we take to try and realize overall savings?
And that's probably should have added that to the previous slide. Yeah. So we do a reverse auction for our electric and gas rates. What that basically is, it's a live auction. So all the suppliers can come in to bid. And they can give us, and it's based on the lowest bid. So we'll start at a certain point and you'll have. X company come in and lower the price and you'll have another company come in. We're watching this all live. And then when it gets down to less than two minutes. If you want to put a lower price in, you put the lower price in and then the clock restarts at two minutes. So nobody can come in at the last second and just drop the rate. It 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 gives an opportunity for everybody to continue to drop the rate. And we've experienced excellent rates in the previous years and we're going to continue with this practice. And currently they are with the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey of in the co-op. So. We'll continue to use that service.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano.
And our last slide is based on the average home with the increase will be for the years, $276.36. The increase per month is $23.03. What I will have on the website tomorrow is our school calculator. I'll update it to reflect. The new numbers and you can go in and put your assessment in and you can exactly see what your increase will be for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano and Dr. Cascon. That was very thorough. We'll open it up for questions from the board right now. We'll start to my virtual left with Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you. Once again, struggling to unmute. I'll get used to this in another three or four months. Thank you very much, Mr. Calavano and Dr. Cascon. Just wanted to share a couple of thoughts. We we've been through this a couple of times in in public meetings. I don't really have any questions at this point, but just wanted to share some thoughts briefly. A big part of my background and my work experience is rooted in in project management and we talk about a. A triangle of cost and time and quality. And saving in one area is going to cost you in other areas. There's always a balance to be achieved in that triangle. And I've gone through this budget process along with the administration and the board. Sort of having a, you know, that idea in my mind. It's. It's an incredible exercise really being involved in in the planning that goes on in in running a school district. It's a pleasure and a real source of pride, but the exercise of funding. The school district is brutal, absolutely brutal. And I'm appreciative of. The administration for the hard work that you've done to look for opportunities to save and to be creative. Excuse me, to be creative and appreciative of the board for. Looking out for the best interests of the students while at the same time really being concerned about about taxes and about our community, our larger community. So the the sort of triangle that I've had in in mind is this. Maintaining the quality of of our educational offerings and the safety for our students and providing for the potential for academic growth in our schools. On another side of it, maintaining staffing. To optimal levels. And and on another side restraining taxes or restraining tax increases. And something's got to give, especially in really challenging times. And like I said, this has been a bit of a brutal process and I think we all feel a little bit battered by it. But it's one of those circumstances where I feel, looking at the end result here, I feel that as a team, we've come to. We've come to a place that honors the mission of a school district to serve our students and serve our community. While at the same time. Hurting in a couple of other areas in order to make it possible. So I'm proud of what we've accomplished this year in challenging circumstances. I'm proud of what we're going to accomplish next year. Saddened by the pain that some members of our staff and our community are going to feel. But but grateful for for toughing this out with all of you. Thank you for letting me share those thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Trig Scales.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I think we've got a nice group that have that has joined us this evening. And I too would like to commend Dr. Cascon and Mr. Calavano. And the cabinet and the principals, everybody who's been involved in the process. This is my second go around. Doing a budget as a board member and I can unequivocally say it's the most difficult one. Because you are trying to meet the needs of the school district at the same time. Being concerned about the tax burden. So I agree with everything that my fellow board member, Mr. Rothstein said. But there are some things that. I am happy to see in the budget, cutting staff is is never one of them. But I see where we are adding staff. So needs change over time. That that's important for the. The public to understand as well. So even though we are cutting some staff. The needs have changed and it's important that we add in other areas. The district priorities, instructional programs, supporting staff and safety and security. And attending to the needs of our special needs population. Those are big ticket items, big ticket items, although all of that. Amounts to a very small percentage in the overall budget. I'm happy to see that we are in a position to add academic support at Liberty and. Roosevelt. We were able to do that last year at Edison, but it it's extremely important that we're doing everything we can to prepare our students. Academics, that that's what we're here for. That that's our primary mission. And so when we have subgroups of students who are not performing. As well as we'd like them to, it's incumbent upon us to take the necessary. To provide that additional support. Now, I I did just want to ask one question. I did listen to the press release. Press conference today with the governor and the commissioner. And talking about the 310 million that is slated through the CARES Act. And so. I wonder how this could impact us. It talked about the money could be allocated for technology. Cleaning, mental health, summer learning, after school learning. And meals for subgroups. So I know that we are currently doing all of that, but I just wondered, Mr. Calavano. Any, any idea what we might get? Out of that 310 million, has there been any, any leakage on how that's going to be appropriated?
Not to the school business officials.
I can speak to that a little bit. So. You know, and and I I think what I've, having sat in on a couple of webinars and. You know, with with our our grant partner and 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 county officials is. It everything is is shifting and. And changing so quickly. And I don't think that the the governmental entities, agencies even really have a clear sense. Of how they plan to allocate it. But one, one constructive thing I heard was that out of that federal money. That it was going, that it was going to be largely Title I driven. So in other words. That that school districts would get 80% above and beyond their typical Title I allocation. But in essence, it would have to be applied in this in a similar manner, in similar populations in schools that Title I funding was. That's all I, that's the only concrete piece of feedback I've heard. But in terms of, you know, the flexibility of how we can use that, how much we'll ultimately get. You know, how much state aid will lose and the extent to which the federal money can compensate for that. I I think overall it was a promising message because it certainly wasn't saying we were getting less. And so the. The 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 promise of being able to get some additional funding that can offset it is obviously a promising message, but ultimately what that is. I don't think they know and we definitely don't.
Another question, the bus and the two vans, 100, over 100,000 miles. So what's the life expectancy for a a school bus?
Well, what we we what we try to do is we try to. I think you can run them longer, but I think what we try to do is we try to get to a point where we know where it it's about to, you know, time to, you know, let it go. And we'll work with 100 County Ed Services Commission, we'll put it out for auction and we'll see if we can get any bids on it. So at least we'll have some value coming back to us. But we're trying to do it like in a rotation. So just like we do with the computers every so often, we continue to rotate them. And that's what we're trying to do with the bus fleet. So we don't get caught one year with six or seven buses that we have to replace.
Okay, okay. Again. Thank you very much. And just to the public, I think Mr. Rothstein said brutal. This was a tough one, given the. The pandemic right now. Realizing what the job situation is with so many of our our families. This was extremely difficult for us to do and. I too feel that we did a very fine job. I want to thank my fellow board members for their diligence in. Looking at the budget and looking for efficiencies and looking for cuts and reductions. I I think we did a very thorough job. So thank you to my fellow board members as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with all of that. Ms. Merkler.
So I just have a few follow-up questions. I feel like I've asked like 101 questions about the budget itself. I do want to thank John and Scott and the rest of the board members and everyone for their time and effort in it. Just to ask some questions, I'm going to hold my commentary for later about it, but just some questions that I need some clarity on. Can you just remind me, slide 14, when did we implement the reading and writing? Does, do you know off the top of your head when we first implemented that?
Yeah, I mean, I I it's been no less than seven or eight years.
Okay.
Yeah, it's it's been, it's been a long while.
And I know. I know we don't really probably have an idea of this. And thanks, Scott, you just kind of spoke to it, but in terms of the state funding. What is the possibility that we think that it will get cut in what we're expecting?
You know, so I was on a, I was on a conference, I was sitting in on the the super Essex County Superintendent's Roundtable and. Dr. Rich Baza, who's the the head of NJASA and who's kind of serving as a liaison, you know. To Trenton, the governor, insofar as that association goes. Said that what he's hearing coming out of the state is that the likelihood that our state aid will be reduced is significant. You know, that the loss revenues on the part of the state, the 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 outgoing funds to support a variety of different things. In the state during the situation, you know, raise the likelihood that their ability to 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 provide that that same level of funding. But would be reduced. What I've also heard, which is interesting, and we heard it tonight, actually, is that. The the following year could could be, you know, as bad if not worse insofar as the the states. is that the, the following year could, could be, you know, as bad if not worse insofar as, um, the, the state's ability to deliver funding. So, you know, it, it's, we're really just speculating, hypothesizing, it could be the 2.5 additional that we got. Um, and we've heard up to as much as 50% of what, uh, we typically get, which could be up, upwards at around of $8 million. That could be, uh, cut between now and September 1.
Okay, um, and just in terms of the bank cap and for those that are joining, um, online that may not understand. John, if you could just confirm, the bank cap is not extra money that's sitting in a bank account accruing interest. It's actually taxable. So it's, an additional tax that would come to the taxpayer if, if we utilize any part of it.
That's correct.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for folks that, um, it's not that we have a bank of money that's sitting there waiting for us to use if we want to. It's actually additional tax money that, um, are tax percentages that can get added on, um, that we would utilize.
Allow school districts to go above and beyond a 2% cap.
Right. Okay. Those are all the questions. I'll save my commentary for later.
Right. Uh, the way I look at it is, you know, if you went to 1%, one year, you can take that, that other 1% is in a bank where you can, it's not really a bank. You have the, the ability to use it at some future date. So you're sort of setting aside and in some other future year, you can go above your 2% limit by that 1% you didn't use that year. So that's how that sort of works out. Uh, Ms. Tonacliff.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Mr. Calavano, if you could, you did such a nice job explaining to me, um, when I had a question about the debt service fund on the tax levy comparison on page 11, I just wanted you to, for the public's, uh, understanding, um, how we got to the lower number this school year on the debt fund service, if you wouldn't mind, explaining that to everyone, I'd appreciate it.
So prior to my arrival, um, there was an error made with the debt service. And, uh, years ago, uh, when the district received funding for certain projects, you had to classify as receiving funding or not receiving the funding, uh, the grant. And you'd be eligible for debt service. So there's certain projects that we checked off indicating debt service. But we were receiving grant money for those projects. So the state caught up with us and we actually had to repay that money back to the state of, you know, what they, what they gave us in debt service for those years. So they were going to try to take it for, you know, from us from one year. So I pleaded with them to see if I can go over five, six, seven years. And I said, no, Will, the best we could do is three years. Well, the current year that we're in now is the last of the three years. So it was about $1.2 million we had to repay back. And what they would do is they would reduce our debt service by $400,000 plus each year. So this coming school year, now we are entitled to our full amount of debt service less, you know, we don't have to pay back the, the error that was made years ago.
Thank you. Appreciate your educating us on that. Um, I also wanted to say what I was particularly excited about that we were able to do this time is I've long felt that we've had a great body of expertise in our, um, faculty here at, in the West Orange School District. So the fact that we're moving to a model that is going to be able to teach each other, a peer mentor and peer teaching, I really like that and appreciate the fact that, um, we're going to use that because I do think there's, um, a good bit of talent in our district. So I'm glad that it's being recognized this, in this way. And also being able to save us, um, some money on out of district costs for those professional developments. So, um, I'm a big believer of, of helping, uh, see the peers help each other. Um, I also recently took, um, since I'm working from home, I was able to take a couple of, um, NJ SBA, um, webinars and one of them was on, um, recent funding that's available to the educational sector for district projects that may be related to COVID-19. And I had forwarded, um, I think to Dr. Kascone and Mr. Calavano, a forum. So any projects we might be able to recoup some costs for these grants that are out there. So as of, I think, March 13th, anything that we spent to clean facilities or things like that, we might be able to get some of that, uh, money back. So I'm hoping that we might be able to, um, to work on that. Um, I think this, having been a, a new board member and this being my first time going through a budget, process, it is, um, a lot harder than you think. And I think, uh, making some of the decisions we made, um, was very, very difficult. Um, I think you really start to think about what your role is, who we are as a district. Um, you know, who do we want to be as a district aspirationally? Where do we want to be five, 10 years from now for the students? You know, how do we not sacrifice student achievement in considering what we're doing? And having to make some really difficult choices this year. Um, so, um, it was difficult. I echo what, you know, my other colleagues on the board have said, um, but I hope that, um, with what we're looking at coming down the pike, that we don't lose that opportunity to really continue to be who we are as West Orange and the things that make our school district great. And, um, so I'm, I'm proud of the work we did and I'm thankful to, uh, a group of colleagues and I feel we all pushed each other, um, to, uh, look at things more deeply and more closely. And, um, uh, so I thank you and I thank everyone who's tuned in tonight, uh, um, as a community for, for being present and, uh, holding us accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Um, a couple of questions. Um, on the 2,800 Chromebooks that, uh, we're looking at replacing this year, I know that that number is higher than it would normally be because there were some years where we replaced fewer. Do we think that this will get us back on track to be closer to that 1,800, 1,900 number that we're expecting to replace each year in the four-year cycle, starting next year?
Absolutely. I mean, it'll, it'll definitely, it'll definitely enable us to kind of close, um, the, the gap that, that emerged. As a result, I believe in Mr. Calavano might be able to provide some more specific, yeah, specific information, but there was one year in particular where I think we purchased well under.
I think we did 300, I think that one year, yeah.
Yeah. So we were, that really created a, you know, a deficit, but this is, this is going to go a long way towards that.
It's a little painful, but it's, it'll be good to get that wrapped up. Um, the, on the upgrading bus radios to digital, more just a, you know, a comment than a question, really. I would suggest, you know, just getting together with the police department because I know that they've had issues. There's parts in town, of towns where their radios are better than others. And I'm not sure if they're analog or digital or if they're hybrid or not, but there's just something, if you coordinate, you might be able to, you know, they may have already laid down some of the groundwork that we need to look at for that. On the insurance, I just wanted to point this out like more specifically and explicitly. The state health benefits plan, not only, uh, as I always say, generally ends up costing us more because it's not equal to or better than the coverage the district already has, which means that if we were to switch to it, we'd be paying make goods to people, which would eliminate any cost savings. But according to that, uh, page 28 in the presentation, it's actually would be 4.1% higher than what we're paying right now. I think, yes.
Mr. Calavano.
Well, it's a 4.1% increase versus the 1% increase with Etna.
Gotcha. Uh, and then, you know, the other thing with the state health plan that I think we've talked about before, but it's a little bit complicated. So it doesn't, uh, often get, get out there. Um, even though we are on a July through June fiscal year and Horizon and Etna for that matter are as well, the state health plan for some reason runs January to December. So when you sign up for it for a July start, like a district like us would have to do, uh, you don't know what your January renewal numbers are going to look like. And as explained in the footnote here, uh, on average, over the past 10 years, that annual increase has been 9.4%. So even in a year where the state health plan is cheaper than what you currently have, and again, it's not, it's 4.1% higher than what we've got. You're still looking at an unknown, uh, you know, pig in a poach sort of situation for your renewal come January, uh, which is hard to budget for since you're striking your budget in May for July through June. And then you suddenly get a 9% increase to your healthcare in June, in, uh, January. Uh, not great. And my last question, Mr. Calavano, um, to the extent, I know it's hard to predict, but you know, I think we, we have a sense that there's going to be some areas where the district ends up spending less than forecasted over the next couple of months. For instance, you know, we're not going to be air conditioning offices, you know, over the next two months. Uh, there's other areas where we're probably spending more than we were expecting to, like food services. So, you know, it may end up being a wash, but to the extent that there's money that was budgeted that doesn't get spent during this year, what's the mechanism for that? Does that go into capital reserve or something like that, or fund balance, one of the areas where we're traditionally low? Or does something, and does it get carried over into its same category for next year? Or what's the procedure there?
Well, I would suggest that, um, it drops the surplus. And if we happen to exceed our 2% of surplus, then that balance would go into capital reserve. And we would have to approve a resolution at the second meeting in June to authorize us or authorize the auditor to move the money, any excess into capital reserve. Now, we do usually put a resolution out there each June, but we've never had, uh, the access to move into capital reserve.
Gotcha. That makes sense. All right. Uh, that's all I've got. I thank you and Dr. Kascone and Ms. Flores and everyone else who's worked on this and put together this presentation. And of course, my fellow board members, uh, you know, this is my third time, uh, doing the budget process and it is a lot of looking at a lot of numbers and, you know, trying to find little places where we can cut enough to make a difference. And, you know, I think we've made a big difference in this budget. Um, you know, I wish it could be more, but you know, at the end of the day, we've got a responsibility to maintain some programs and make sure that we continue our excellence here. So I think we've done what we can. Uh, at this point, we'll take questions from the public on agenda items only. You'll have a procedure on the screen. Uh, when you come in, just let us know your name and address and you'll have three minutes on the clock.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Alper. At this time, if we have any, uh, questions from the audience, you can use the raise the hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. If you are a phone caller, we do have some calling in. Thank you. You can press star nine. And, uh, at this time, uh, first we have Adam Kramer. You can follow the prompt that's on your screen and let us, uh, know when you've done that. Okay. Are you there, Adam?
Yes. Good evening, board members, um, and, uh, our business administrator and our superintendent. Factually, um, I'd like to say that I have some questions and comments on the budget. Factually, you're spending well over 4% more than you did in the previous fiscal year. Actually, you're upping the tax levy about 2.5% or more. I just don't think that's really right in this economic context. I think you're spending more than the tax base can sustain. Education is important, but you can't spend more than the tax base can sustain. Most of it is because we have an unsustainable arrangement with our public employees. It's not to say that we don't like our public employees. It's not to say that we should put them in poverty or that they're doing a bad job. But we have an unsustainable situation and that's driving this whole budget problem. I don't know how many people in West Orange are having a step raise plus a court, a, a regular scheduled raise. Most of West Orange is just lucky to have a job. I don't know how many people have a healthcare sick, coverage that is as generous as what the West Orange and public employees have. I don't know how many people have a pension system that is as generous, where you can work 30 years and have a pretty nice check guaranteed for the rest of your life plus healthcare. It's just not sustainable. And unfortunately, um, politicians from Trenton and local leaders in districts around the state, including West Orange, have for years accepted this status quo and thought it was sustainable. And now we're in economic crisis. It's not sustainable. It never was even during good times. So I'm going to ask you to go back and I'm going to ask you to make more cuts and not pass this. Because quite frankly, I don't know too many people in West Orange who are seeing 4%, 2.5% increases in income. I don't know too many businesses that are seeing profits go up 2%, 4%. I see most of West Orange lucky if they have a job, worried if, because one or more people in the house doesn't have, doesn't have a job. And I see businesses in this town that are on the brink. So this is not good. Um, the, the cuts are not enough. Uh, I thank you and I respect, um, you for hearing me out and listening to me.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um, uh, Ms. Mordecai, if you follow the prompt on your screen. Okay, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. First of all, thank you very much for your hard work on the budget. Totally appreciate you all. Um, and I know how hard it is having done this myself, uh, 10 times, yeah, on the board. A couple of questions. So the state fiscal year is extended to September and the state has asked towns and our town, uh, agreed to defer more, uh, tax payments and they asked mortgageers to defer mortgage payments. So I was here, but you're going to have a revenue issue coming up. 19 billion in education spending is obviously going to get cut. As right now, the priority is the COVID. Is there anything, um, any items that you would put on hold for next year or cut? I'm thinking in particular, a lot of the capital projects, unless the roof is literally falling in, some of those can be put on hold. Um, I'm looking at the presentation and even though you said that you're applying for another security grant, so you removed some security items out of it. I believe crisis prevention intervention training pre-K to 12 should probably come under one of those security grants you're applying for. What's the next thing? Oh, at the March preliminary budget hearing, I mentioned scheduling technology purchases over three to five year period. You responded that it was a lease. How much was that? How much is that purchase? That amount's not here and I didn't hear anybody mention it. On page 16 of the presentation, diversity, equity, equity and access is mentioned, but it says, it should be pre-K to 12, to grade 12, but literally to age 21, as we have students who are 21. And again, on the same page, it says autism classes are pre-K through the 12th grade. It's actually again through age 21. But on that autism portion, we've had an agreement with Montclair State Center for Autism for about maybe five years now. I wanted to know if that program was looked at in relation to what they can give the district. And I know that, um, I think the last time I saw it on an agenda, it was just over 30,000 per year for that agreement. I wondered if the Betty School had been added into that agreement or if that's still for the Kelly School? And could that agreement be expanded district wide for cost savings? Ms. Trigscals mentioned that the bus and two vans will cost a hundred thousand. I don't know if that's another cost that you can put aside in light of the fact that this budget is over 2.5, as Mr. Kramer said. And, um, many, many people are unemployed, you know. Um, the semi aid, is there an effort made, being made? I know we've asked over the last few years to do this as well. Is there an effort being made, uh, with parents to explain to them what semi aid is to achieve maximum revenue from that department? And my last comment, there are actually two more comments. That, there are a lot of districts that are using per deem outside administrators to do observations that are required by the Teach New Jersey Act or Chief NJ, retired superintendents, supervisors, whoever, to achieve some savings. So I don't know if that's being looked at. I've mentioned it last year. I don't think anything happened with that. But this year, obviously you're going to have to look at a more austere type of cost, uh, system. And my last question is, have you looked at the special education audit and action plan recently? And are you going to build up the special services offerings to try to bring back out of district students? You know, the last time we did that was when Ms. Madalena was alive. And, um, we saved over a million dollars bringing back quite a few students. And out of district students could cost a district anywhere from 50 to 100,000 per student, depending on disability, plus transportation, aids, bus monitors, et cetera. So. plus transportation, AIDS, bus monitors, et cetera. So a lot of parents and students would want their child to be with their home district and neighborhood friends. So it would be a win-win for all. So if at all possible, you could do that. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. At this time is a final call for anyone, uh, looking for questions for the agenda items. Again, it's the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And if you're joining us by telephone, it's pound nine. We do have one. Thank you. Uh, Robin, uh, if you can follow the prompt that's on your screen, please. Thank you, Robin. Are you there?
Yep. Hi.
Thank you.
Rob and I, Sarah, it's 22 Yale Terrace. Uh, I just wanted to thank everyone, uh, for all the hard work, uh, you've all done on this budget. Um, and just wanted to say that on the first day of teacher and staff appreciation week, where we have heard that school will continue remotely through the end of the school year. Um, I just would like to say that among many of us who actually send our children to the district schools, we support the tireless work and effort of our teaching and administrative staff. Uh, we would be at a much worse position if we didn't have the dedication of our faculty and our staff. And this should be something celebrated rather than demeaned by comments, uh, from those who don't send their, uh, children to the schools. Um, one quick question. Um, do we have any specifics on where the 25, uh, full-time, uh, employee eliminations will come from? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Once again, do we have any other? Oh, we do. Thank you. Nicole, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. And Nicole, are you there?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. I also wanted to thank the board for your hard work on this budget. I can't imagine, um, what a job this was, especially with what's going on and the uncertainty that we have right now. I also, um, as Robin said, wanted to acknowledge that this is the first day of teacher appreciation week and it's really hard to be separated from them. As I know, it must be so hard for them to be separated from the students. And they're working in ways they've never worked before, supporting families, literally family is learning at home right now. Um, so I just know it's so important to acknowledge the hard work that they are accomplishing right now and just how sad that they must be just getting the, the news today that we will not be continuing school in their buildings for the rest of the year. That's a lot of, um, broken, you know, relationships that are stopping without, um, the proper goodbyes that we are used to having. So I also wanted to thank you for offering the budget item of the resource support in grade seven and eight. That's very important. Um, I know that it was added last year in sixth grade and again, continuing it, especially in middle school. And then actually the same question that Robin had about which staff positions are going to be eliminated if you have actual, um, numbers of, and placements of where those will be. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Once again, if we have anyone else, this is general note, you can push the raise your hand when we open a comment at any time. It does hold your place, um, when you push it. So you don't have to wait for someone else to finish their statements. And do we have anyone at this time? Okay. We have no others. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Casco, do you want to respond to anything there? And then I'll have a couple.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's, you know, there's, there's no, um, there's no, there's no wrong perspective, right? I mean, I think that there's, um, there, there's legitimacy on, on both sides of the argument. Um, you know, in terms of, of responding substantively to, you know, to, um, you know, any of the queries that, that were made, um, you know, I think it would be more appropriate to, uh, to, to process the questions that have come in and, and to really provide, you know, cogent, uh, responses to those questions, uh, you know, moving forward. Um, you know, and as, you know, we could certainly circle back with that, uh, at the, the next board meeting, I'd be happy to have, uh, you know, dialogue with any of the members from the public have raised those questions, um, you know, offline. Um, I will tell you that, um, in terms of the, of the staff lines, you know, those, those staff lines, and, and I don't have the, the comprehensive cut list in front of me, but I can tell you is, is that they, they, they span all different, different bargaining units and, and different, different, um, positions. You know, there's, uh, they're not, um, exclusively teaching positions. Um, you know, they, they are, they, you know, for all different types of positions and different, different bargaining units within the, uh, the district. You know, so, uh, I mean, the only thing I would say, and I would kind of echo this again, is, um, you know, that, you know, Mr. Kramer, um, you, you know, has, has a valid point, which is, which is the, you know, the, the, the funding of, uh, the manner in which we fund our school districts is upside down and it is unsustainable. And it has been, um, you know, since, uh, the 2% cap, uh, really, I would argue that that really, uh, accelerated the, the unsustainability of it. But you can't fix that overnight, right? You, you can't, you can't pull the Band-Aid overnight, um, and expect that, um, that, that the school district, which it is now, um, will be able to function, um, you know, reasonably well for the children whom it serves. Um, what I can tell you is, is that, and I've been saying this prior to coming to West Orange, and I've been saying it since I got here, which is that, that we need a more long-term approach, um, and solution to our funding issues. And the reality of it is, is that we spend anywhere between eight and $10 million more than we really should a year. And, and we need to figure out a way to be leaner. We need to be, find out a way to be more efficient and effective. But that's not something that's going to happen overnight. I think we've taken a step in that direction this year. Um, and I think it's something that this board is committed to moving forward, but without compromising what we do for kids. And that's not an easy, that's not an easy answer. It's certainly not something that's going to be answered overnight. Um, but there is, there is no wrong, uh, wrong, wrong perspective on this. They're, they're both equally valid. Um, but in terms of specific answers to questions, I'm happy to, I've, I've taken note of those questions, um, and would be happy to provide responses to folks, uh, subsequently.
All right. Thank you. And I, you know, I would echo a lot of that. Um, you know, there's some really good points in there about sustainability. And I think it has a lot to do with the way schools are funded in New Jersey statewide. It's not a necessarily West Orange problem. It's really a New Jersey problem. It's probably beyond that as well, but, uh, some things definitely have to shift there. Um, I just on teacher appreciation day, which, or week rather, which we'll touch on later, I'm sure. Uh, you know, I sent an email this morning to the staff and, uh, you know, just, you know, just to reiterate some of what I said there, you know, this year, more than ever, you know, I think a lot of, I think teachers are going to be hearing from a lot of their students and a lot of their students' parents about exactly, you know, how valued they are and how much people are seeing, you know, gets done, how we really have had this amazing transition to, uh, online learning, you know, people are doing the impossible out there and, you know, they're doing it with grace and aplomb every day, you know, and they're doing it while they're facing their own circumstances, whether it's, you know, their own kids running underfoot, their spouses in the way, doing their own work and, you know, all the way up to like, you know, unimaginable family tragedies that people are going through, you know. Uh, so, you know, like I said, we, we see you and we value and appreciate you and, you know, we miss you and our kids miss you. And, uh, with that, I think we can close out that section and move on. Uh, may I have a motion for personnel items one through four?
Motion.
And I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? I'll, uh, congratulate some retirees. Karen Diaz, uh, Lucila Mura at, uh, Mount Pleasant, 15 years, and Nurse Ruderman from Hazel after 21 years is retiring. So congratulations and best wishes to all in their retirements. Mr. Calabano.
This is Merklinger.
Yes.
The Rothstein?
Yes.
Mr. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Next up, uh, curriculum and instruction items one through two. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just think it's, uh, wonderful that our superintendent is, um, going to be hosting two interns and what lucky interns they are to be here in West Orange with our own Dr. J. Scott Casco. They are two lucky people. And also, uh, very nice to see that the high school will be having a psychology intern, um, as well.
Mr. Trick Scales?
Yes.
I, I would just note that the, the two, I noticed in the participant list that those two interns are actually present for the meeting. So, uh,
Great.
Anton and Chelsea are in attendance.
Oh, now they really know how lucky they are. Well, welcome.
Yes.
Yep. All right. Mr. Calabano.
This is Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mr. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Next, uh, we'll separate the budget resolution, uh, on its own thing. So let's first, uh, may I have a motion for special services item one and business office items two through seven?
Yes, moved.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on those items?
Yeah. So I just have, um, a question for, on, on item six. Um, I know we saw the agreement, um, this afternoon, but my concern is that there is no clause that protects us should the camp be canceled. Um, I understand that we can, we can cancel the purchase order, but my concern is that there's nothing to protect us. And it does say a non-refundable $1,000 deposit. Um, so I just want to make sure that our school district, in, in light of trying to be fiscally responsible, that we do either put something into that. And my other question is in terms of equity and fairness, um, I think we should revisit who should be accountable for handling the camp. I know in the past, the school district did pay for it. However, um, our other programs at the high school, parents pay for their kids to go to the camp and pay for the camp itself. Um, so the football team, baseball, cheerleading. Um, so just in light of thinking about things like of this nature, um, I just wanted to bring those two concerns of mine to, to the table.
Mr. Calabano?
Um, I can have, uh, our board attorney draft, um, a clause regarding, um, cancellation. But I can tell you in the past, uh, we've never paid the deposit and we always paid after the event occurred. Um, so there's gonna, there will be nothing upfront that we're gonna, actually, the purchase order was even, uh, sent afterwards. So, uh, but I'll make sure board attorney drafts, uh, uh, some kind of clause that we have it out.
Mr. Calabano, one other question for you. Um, it was my understanding that, um, i- is the funding of that trip through the music boosters?
Um, some, some of it comes from, uh, music and boosters. This is for our staff members. So this, this is our charge.
Okay. So this is the, this is the cost for, for the staff members who go on, on, that participate in the camp?
Right.
But not for the students. Okay.
That, that makes a little bit of a difference. Um, so are we able to hold off until we get that new clause? I don't.
Is there any danger if we put, put that off to the 14th for that to be inserted? Like, would they miss their slot or anything like that?
I don't know.
Can we, are we able to conditionally approve it? Like, uh, with that understanding that that'll be added in and that we won't be paying a deposit that we might not get back?
Yes, we could do that.
All right. If that's doable, if it's possible.
Prove it with an amendment to the, yeah, we should be able to do that.
Right. Okay. Let's do that.
Okay. That makes sense.
So noted.
All right. Any further discussion on, uh, one, special services and two through seven, uh, biz office? All right. Mr. Calabano.
This is Merklinger.
Yes, based on, um, with number six being amended later.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay. Next, uh, business office item one, the budget resolution. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion. Good.
Okay. Well, so I'm sure, um, folks have probably understood that I've struggled with this, um, in terms of how to handle it. And it's a huge undertaking and it is very difficult. And as my peer, uh, board members have explained, it's been a grueling process. Um, you know, Scott, Anna, John have put in a lot of time and hours and even our staff and their recommendations and our principals and administration who have all had input on it. Um, you know, and something that was told to me when I, when I got elected was there's four areas you have to consider when you're looking at the budget. It's the students. Are we providing them with the tools they need to be successful in life? Um, and to be, you know, successful in their education and are they have, you know, are we meeting all of their needs? Um, the teachers and staff, are we providing them with the tools that they need in order to teach our students and provide, um, the best education? You know, I'm happy to see that we're empowering them to do the in-house professional development. I think that's a great, um, step in, you know, just encouraging their abilities and highlighting and spotlighting what they can do. Um, then looking at buildings and facilities are, you know, are our structures sustainable? Are, you know, we have the retaining wall at Washington that needs to get fixed? The roof at St. Cloud, you know, I've seen that for quite some time. Um, so, you know, those are things that we have to, to make sure we have, um, a safe place for our students to actually be educated, um, when they return back to, you know, brick and mortar. Um, and then the fourth is our taxpayers in our community. And I think most folks know that I've grown up here and my family's been in West Orange for over 80 years, um, born and raised. And, you know, I bleed West Orange. So I definitely feel for everyone, especially the taxpayers who, especially during these economic times are feeling that pressure. And I have to agree with Mr. Kramer and with, with Dr. Casco and said, you know, we do need to push pause, I think at some point and kind of take a step back and look at where are we spending? And, um, you know, it is nice to have the new and shiny bright things, but in some cases like we are right now, it's making do with what we have. Um, you know, so I've been kind of on the fence about what to do with the budget and, you know, whether to approve it or go forward with it. I think a lot of what I've heard tonight kind of helped me with that decision. Um, with the understanding that we're probably going to have additional cuts that we're not going to have a choice to make. Um, so, you know, with that, I just hope that everyone can understand that this was not an easy process and this is not fun and cutting staff is definitely not, um, a fun thing to do, but in some cases it's necessary. And I think we did our best to ease it. So where it was a retirement, um, you know, looking at is that, do we have to replace that? So we're not hurting anyone. It's folks are retiring and we're just not going to replace that, that, um, that person. Um, so I just want to say that I appreciate everyone's hard work. Um, I'm, I apologize for the, my 101 questions that I asked about probably every single line in the, in the book, um, the detailed budget plan. Um, but I appreciate everyone taking the time to answer those questions and provide really thorough responses. Um, and it's not easy. And I want to definitely, you know, thank our teachers for what they're doing and thank our parents for, for right now having to be that, um, the teacher as well as working from home in most cases and having to do dual roles in addition to parenting. Um, so definitely, you know, I echo the thoughts of my peers on this. So that's just what I want to say about the budget.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All right. Mr. Calabano, let's vote.
This is Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay. Next, uh, public comment petitions and hearings of citizens on any topic. Again, you'll have the instructions on screen. You can press the raise hand button at any time and, uh, you'll have three minutes. Just let us know your name and address.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Kramer. If you can follow the prompt on your screen once again. And are you there?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, board members, superintendent and business administrator, uh, thank you for hearing me out. Um, I think a lot of what's going on is that as board members, superintendents and a business administrator, you hear a lot from parents who want more services. Staff members that want more resources for their staff. You hear from fiscal conservatives like me sometimes and people in the community sometimes, but maybe not as much. So what I'm going to ask is between now and the next time you write a budget, come up with a budget in the spring of 2021, make a point to spend some time with business owners who are really struggling. Make a point to spend some time with some people who are on the bubble of having their house foreclosed. And there are a number of them and that number will grow in this town. Make a point to meet some people who are near retirement age and seeing their 401ks drop and wondering if they can stay in their homes in retirement. And get their perspective just as much as you get the perspective of just as much as you get the perspective of the parents, the students, the school employees. I'm certainly not saying that their side of the coin is invalid. Education is important and you do need to have a good level of taxation to make schools really work. Exactly how high that level it is is subject to debate. And remember, you swore to uphold the constitution of the state and the constitution of the United States. And with the state in particular, that clause that was written in 1947, a thorough and efficient education. We are a lot of people wanting to make sure about the thorough side and devoting more and more resources to make that side work. Probably don't hear as much from people who want to push the efficient side of that constitutional phrase in our state constitution. So broaden your perspective between now and the next budget meeting. And you'll certainly hear from me between now and the spring of 2021. I wish you the best of luck running these schools. And may you do well in what I'm sure will be a challenging economic situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Okay, thank you. And Sandra, if you can follow the prompt on your screen as well again, please? Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. I just wanted to, to add Happy Teachers Week to all teachers as well as Happy Nurses Week. And again, to say thank you for all your hard work. But I will note that none of my questions were answered from my first comment on the budget. So I look forward to your responses by email or another day. Because nothing was responded to.
Thank you.
If anybody else at this time? Again, if you are sharing, calling in, it is the star nine. Okay, thank you, Ms. Ruffo, if you can, yep, there you go.
Okay, Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. This is May and it is the beginning of allergy awareness month. And there's been a big push to have an allergy management plan pushed into our schools. So I just wanted to ask how that's going because I know there was a first reading a couple of months ago. And just to see what the status of that is. I have to say, as an allergy parent, it actually has been a little bit of freeing being home with the the kids and not having to worry about any outside anything, birthday parties, food, from any other places, the classrooms. I do have to say that this experience of the pandemic is, I think, given a good way of explaining the psychological and physiological responses that families of food allergies feel as they're managing the stress and the trauma. That we hold a worry every time our loved ones are going out into the world. We are always have been the ones, the crazy ones who've been wiping down airplanes, seats and restaurant surfaces, grocery carts for years. And for us, we know that our loved ones could, you know, contact with something as small as a piece of sand that could harm our loved ones. So, you know, there's an understanding now, I think, a little bit of what that trauma feels like in your body on a daily basis and the worry and the stress. And that's why I think it's extra important that we have the allergy management plan put into place for next year just so that families have a little bit more of an understanding of how it's managed in the classroom. And I know that it's, you know, there's a lot of decisions that are going to be made about how other things are being managed in the classroom with, whenever we return. So I respect that there's a lot of decisions to be being made at the moment, but this is something that, you know, we've been asking for, for over a year and just want to make sure that it happens for all of our West Orange families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alper, may I?
Yeah, do you want to see if we have anyone else or do you want to?
Okay, yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Okay, do we have anyone else at this time? Okay, we have no others. Thank you.
All right, we'll close it out and Dr. Cascon, all yours.
Okay, so I'd like to start with Mrs. Ruffo's question. And then I'll, I'd like to actually double back to Mrs. Mordecai and, you know, would like to provide some, some answers, you know, to, to some of the questions that she posed. It's important i- in the spirit of just kind of transparently having those questions answered here. It give me an opportunity to kind of think through what she had asked and provide some cogent responses because obviously I'd like to do that. Relative to the allergy management plan, yes, we are, I'm very excited to, you know, to be able to advise that, you know, kind of pursuant to our previous policy work session, the, each board member as well as myself are now going through all of the mandated policies. We've broken those up, about 170 policies. The allergy management plan, which has gone through a number of different feedback loops and edits, is being brought forth as part of that first reading of those mandated policies. And we expect that it'll go through an official first reading at the May 13th board meeting. And will be, go, go through a second reading with the other mandated policies at the June 1st board meeting and be adopted at the June 4th, June 1st board meeting, which will actually be great because it'll give us the, the length of the summer to understand the implications on that plan for training, for building procedures or publications. And so that will be a great timeline for us to work within. So we expect that that policy will be adopted along with the other mandated policies at the June 1st board meeting. So just circling back to a few of the questions and a few of the points which Mrs. Mordecai brought up. I did make a note of the Moncler State Program. I don't have information at this time to respond to that, but I absolutely will be following up with Mrs. Goerdy to see if she had any additional insights on that. You know, continuing along with the, the point about special ed offerings and developing of, of in-house, you know, in district programs. That is obviously something that we are always looking at. We do presently have a number of, of, of broad offerings. You know, it's always a bit of a balancing act on that one. And when you're, and when you're managing or walking a razor's edge in terms of budget, the challenge is, is that it inevitably involves a, a fronting, you know, a, an investment above and beyond what has been in there in the past. And you have to be able to predict with a, 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 a complete degree of certainty that the, the students which that program will be able to service, that we can service those students and that there is a, we, we like to try and approach those situations where there's a bilateral support for those moves back to district from both the district and the parents, that they feel a level of confidence and comfort and comfortability in having their child come back and that program will adequately service them. That, that is the way we, we like to try and, and make programmatic decisions is collaboratively and win-win with our parents as opposed to just simply mandating that. Otherwise, it sort of defeats the purpose of having them come back. So it, it's, it's a numbers game. And we looked at that this year as far as ESS, Essential School Solutions, which offers kind of cornerstone school-like, like programs and support programs, not only for special education students, but also for regular education students who might be struggling in the mainstream with mental health issues. But again, you're talking about a $250,000 investment on the front end. And yes, we would have to guarantee that we'd be able to service four or five, at least four or five students through that. And, 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 and be able to guarantee that. And so it's, it's a challenge in ensuring that it's absolutely going to represent a cost savings to the district and it is going to be in the absolute best interest of the students who we're seeking to bring back. So it's challenging, but it is certainly something that we, we look at every year. And now that I've had a year in chair and had a, an opportunity to really survey the kind of programs we have, what I have asked Mrs. Goerdy to do is to try and trend out the data. In other words, what, when we look at the students who we typically send out at a district, you know, are there, are there, you know, clusters of needs that would represent an opportunity for a program? You know, that, that would make sense. So it's absolutely something we're, we're looking at. I, I thought the suggestion for the per diem administrators is an interesting one. I think it's something that, it's, it's something that I would move very cautiously for because, you know, there's something to be said for administrators who are doing our observations, being a, a part of our administrative culture, a part of our, our, our school district culture. And as such, having, you know, what I would argue is, is a sharper lens and, and a greater level of commitment to the quality of instruction that we're looking for as opposed to kind of just a fly-by-night person who's coming in from at a district to do those observations. I do think, you know, that that becomes really the sticky wicket when it comes to downsizing administratively of those observations. And so if there were an opportunity to, to find high-quality administrators that were coming in per diem and could really actually be outstanding supervisors of instruction, it's certainly something that we could look at, but it's all, it would be something that would be a multi-year plan and not something that we would necessarily be able to move forward this year. As far as the cut list, and I don't, and I know this was both questions that came out of Mrs. Surless and, and Mrs. Ruffo, Mrs. Mordecai might have mentioned it as well, is if you noticed on that slide, you know, there were 15 positions that, that we were, 15 positions that we were able to realize, I'm just going to go back to that slide for a moment, so I'm getting the language right. Mr. Calavano, so I'm not fumbling through my slides. Can you chime in and, and speak to that language? It's 15 that were what and 10 that were what?
15 were due to staffing efficiencies and 10 were due to reductions in classroom, classroom enrollment.
So, so the 15 efficiencies were, were, were cuts that, that did not require that, that were done, say, for example, a retirement that we didn't replace, things of that nature. Is that how you would define that, Mr. Calavano?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, so then when we look at, you know, those 10, those are really the, the ones where we, we looked at enrollment, we looked at class size. But we can, we can absolutely, you know, the, the, the reality is the order in which this goes now is that we now inform, you know, staff members who are impacted. And so just as we inform, the board is the first step in that process. The next step is that we have informed staff. And so, you know, it certainly is appropriate for us to speak with them before we disclose to the public where those, those specific staff members will, will come from. And Mrs. Mordecai, if there were other questions you had, which I might have overlooked with Mr. Alper's permission, if you, if you would like to come back up to the, the podium and ask those questions, if I'm able, I'm happy to answer them for you now. Mr. Alper?
I have some notes. I think a lot of them are going to require a little bit of look and see and email, actually.
Okay.
I, I have some information I can provide.
Okay.
So regarding the semi-aid, I'll discuss with the, I'll have a discussion with the director to see if there's actually a conversation between the parent and us regarding semi-aid. Chromebooks, it's a four-year, it's a four-year lease. And the total amount of the lease would be $687,000 for the equipment. For the buses, it's a five-year lease and we have our first payment in the budget for $55,000. That's all.
All right. And I think if there's anything further, we can take care of that via email because I think it would need a little bit more of looking into. Closing that out, uh, board member reports, Mr. Rothstein?
I always feel like it's so unfair for me to every week to go first. I get to say some of the nice things.
In my head, I'm still sitting, we're still sitting at the table and you're two to the left.
No, no, I get it. I just, I feel like I get to get a jump on saying some of the nice things first. So I know that Dr. Calavano earlier already acknowledged Darlene Follis on being awarded the Princeton Prize in race relations. And I just wanted to say, Darlene, when people ask me if West Orange has good schools, people I know from, who I know from outside of West Orange, it's students like you who I think of when I can say emphatically, yes, we have great schools. The quality of our schools is as good as our students and our faculty and staff. And you're just an incredible example of the students that we have here. So thank you so much to you for being so wonderful. And then to our community who attended the meeting tonight. Again, I mentioned this last week. It's really heartening to, to look at the list of attendees and see so many people from the public attending and showing an interest. It's not always easy to hear some of the comments, especially when, you know, people are unhappy about one thing or another. We get it, but it's so critical to us doing our jobs well. So thank you for being here and making your voices heard. And even if you don't speak up for showing us that you're interested enough and care enough to be here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Trixgales?
Ms. Trixgales, you need to unmute yourself.
I have to learn sign language. Okay, so I just want to again, thank all of the folks who spoke tonight and I appreciate all of the, the comments. I'm so happy that Darlene joined us again. So wonderful to see her. And we couldn't be prouder of her accomplishments. And Mr. Rothstein, you're absolutely right. You go first and I used to be first last year. So everybody can say, and exactly what Mr. Rothstein said. So yes, you, you are the epitome of what makes West Orange so special. So Darlene, again, we're so very, very proud of you. Happy Nurses Week Day, Happy Teachers Day Week. I posted something on Twitter and I don't know if anybody reads it, but I did. I got, I got a few, a few likes, so I'm so excited. But this is what I said. Thank you to all teachers, both actives, retirees and our angel teachers. And one of my favorite quotes is, and it, it's an anonymous quote, but it goes like this, "To teach is to touch a life forever." And I took the liberty of adding, "And wherever." Because teaching right now has certainly taken on a different perspective. I, I neglected to say as far as the budget was concerned, that I'm delighted, pleased that we are continuing our efforts, our efforts with diversity and equity as we well should, since that is one of the goals that we are working on. I'm, I'm proud of our work with, with policy and I'm happy that our fellow board members are joining the committee to make sure that this is done as this is another board goal. And the year is going by so fast. Who would think that you stay at home, that it wouldn't drag? But I don't know where March went. I don't know where April went and we're already into May. And so it is time for us to take stock, to begin to evaluate ourselves, to look at where we are as a board, what have we accomplished, what do we need to do from this point forward? And I know the teachers are working harder than usual. I, I've heard that from not only our teachers, but teachers interviewed on, on TV because this is so new and so different. And as a board, I'm a board member, I'm working harder this year than I did last year. Every time I turn around, we have a meeting and we're reading and, and becoming better informed about what we do. So I, I just want the public to really know that we're working hard for you. This is, we, you elected us and we are meeting our obligations and are very, very busy board members. So not just on the screen, but behind the scenes. And so thanks again for joining us tonight and we hope to see you again real soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Merklinger?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, I add one more thing. Census, I wanted to thank Dr. Cascon and Mr. Santiago. This was digital weekend, this past weekend, and I am on the, what's the name of it, Ken? I forgot. Complete Count Committee for West Orange. And so I get a lot of information from the New York Census, which is our regional census bureau here in the country. And I forward that to Dr. Cascon and among all the other things that he's doing, he's able to get that information out. But we know that to the end, that it will help us making sure that everyone who resides here in West Orange is counted so that in addition to all the other financial support that comes our way from the federal government, it, it does affect what we do here in the schools. So thank you, Dr. Cascon and Mr. Santiago.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Merklinger?
Hi, everyone. So, you know, I just want to echo what Gary and Terry have said. Darlene, congratulations. That's a huge accomplishment.
echo what Gary and Terry have said. Darlene, congratulations. That's a huge accomplishment. And we're very proud of you. And I think it just speaks to the volumes of just how great West Orange is and our school system is. And you know, I think it's just really great, especially we're seeing so many students are posting, you know, where they're going. A lot of our seniors are going to Ivy League schools and even those, you know, even if you're not going to an Ivy League school, those are their continuing the technical careers or culinary arts and things of that nature. I think that's just an amazing thing to be doing. So I just want to give my thoughts and my, you know, positivity towards our seniors. I know it's tough ending the school year like this. You know, we're thinking of you, but I also want to reach out to the freshmen because this is a tough year to be a freshman, especially the NJSIAA came out and canceled the spring season. And that's tough, missing your first year of high school sports, athletics. That's a very tough thing to go through, and especially when you put in a lot of hard work, you've done tryouts. But I want to also recognize our coaches and our extracurricular staff members and folks because they are continually engaged with the students and their team members and holding Zoom meetings, Google Classroom meetings. There's kids that are, you know, our Air Force ROTC program, those folks who are going on into the military. You know, there's just so many great things in West Orange and our education system. And I just want to make sure that we're recognizing everyone who is what you're feeling, especially with May being Mental Health Awareness Month. We want to recognize all the great things that you're doing and to keep up that hope and keep moving forward and to be positive. And I don't know if anyone did see it, but West Orange was named number seven of best school districts in Essex County and number two of 377 as being most diverse. I don't recall, it just came out the other day, and I saw it when I was scrolling through social media, but just want to let everyone know that we're thinking of you and keep up the positive vibes, and we will see you guys soon enough.
All right, thank you. Ms. Tony Cliff.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Thanks for everybody who've tuned in tonight online. We appreciate it. I also want to owe my fellow board members to say to our teachers and our faculty, excuse me, and our staff, that we so appreciate everything that you have been through in the last couple of months. We appreciate you always, but even more so now. We know how difficult this is for you. So I hope you get some nice surprises and some celebrations this week and this month to help sustain you over the next month, two months, actually, before we end school. I know our kids miss you and we miss you, and I also wanted to say thank you to all of our school nurses out there who, you know, are helping our kids. And I think another thing that we left out of the description of what our school nurses do is especially at the high school, as we're relating back to adding a school nurse to the high school roster for next year. They also collect all of the athletics forms and make sure that all of our students have the proper medical examinations and everything. So that's another added thing. And when you think about how many student athletes are in our district, it's quite a big job for just two people to handle. So I wanted to just say thanks to them and wishing you a great Nurses Week this week. I also wanted to congratulate Darlene. It was great to have you back on the dais with us tonight. We're so proud of you. And I also want to congratulate all of our seniors, no matter where you're going, what you're doing. It's exciting to see the posts on Facebook and Instagram of the decision day and where everybody's heading off to. We're going to miss you. And as a board member, we're going to do our best to to celebrate you somehow, some way. So I also wanted to be remind remind everybody that if your student's laptop or Chromebook is having trouble, we do have a a requisition form online that if you need, if it needs service or needs some help, you can go to woboe.org and on the homepage, a couple down right in the middle part of that, you can click on that link. If you do not have internet access, you can call the parent support hotline, which I've mentioned a number of other times at our other board meetings. It's 973-435-9637. So that support line not only helps if you need technology assistance, but it's also for specialized services for student counseling services as well as food service related needs. So again, that hotline number is 973-435-9637. So make sure your laptops and Chromebooks are ready to go as we're now know we're going to need them for the next month and a half or so. And I also wanted to just say, I know this is a hard transition year for all of our kids, not just our seniors who are are potentially leaving the district and off to other endeavors, but for our sixth grade going into seventh, for our eighth graders going into ninth, and for our fifth graders going into sixth. We're we're thinking of all of you too, and we know it's difficult. So thank you. Hang in there, and we'll all get through this together. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I was going to say a few of those things myself. So you saved us some time. Thank you. With that.
I did just remember one last thing. If you haven't seen it on our West Orange Board of Ed page, the West Orange Stronger, Stronger Together sweatshirts, it is benefiting. Part of those proceeds are going towards the class of 2020. So I just want to make sure if you haven't gotten your West Orange Stronger Together sweatshirts, hoodies.
Went back into the second order now that they've got some new colors and new styles. I like that football shirt. Don't know why it's red because what game are you going to wear that to? But I got the white one.
There you go.
Anywho, all right, that's a full lid. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, May 13th at 7:30 PM, public session. So we'll see you then. Get home safe. Have a good night. Adjourned.